So I want to talk about this whole secret recording that came out of the Los Angeles City Council. A meeting between some members of the City Council and some of their donors, right? And a lot of people are talking about the racist comments she made, right? But what she said, I mean, they're not talking about the corruption, which is even worse, to me, was, is even worse than the racism, right? Because it, it shows systematic racism, you know, as being instituted, taken over, subcontracted out, instituted at the hands of so-called Latinos or Hispanics. So I was watching some of the commentary from CNN and different outlets. Excuse me. And they did exactly what I thought they were gonna do. Right? It's too hard to sweep it under the rug. It's too, it's too hard and difficult and widespread now that they hit the internet and news to just sweep it under the rug. So what they decided to do was what they do best is misdirect. See, the secret to disinformation, the misinformation is not lying to you straight up. Right? So they, when they go into damage control, where racism, white supremacy, and it's subcontractors like Hispanics, you know, uh, you know, like, well, I'm not saying subcontractors. I'm gonna say the different aspects of the white supremacists, right? Are the, are the Nazis and the white, the Nazi white supremacists, the different aspects of it, right? It's different manifestations and offshoots, whether it's Jewish, whether it's, you know, your typical white Anglo-Saxon, whether it's your Latino Hispanic, right? It, it's just like different flavors of it. And you'll see different offshoots of it. Now, this particular offshoot, what they did was, once it got caught, right, red-handed with this whole, you know, particular systematic, basically, this is systematic white supremacists at work, right? And, and, and the offshoot of it would be, you know, to clear up some of the confusion, the offshoot of it, right, would be this Latino Hispanic wing, right? And don't get me wrong, it also comes in black, right? Or brown, as in Indians like Kamala Harris. You see, so it's different flavors of this, and that's why it's hard to call it white supremacy. You have to say more, so it's more, uh, white supremacist Nazism. You see? It's a white supremacist Nazi fascist cabal. At the top is the white supremacists. You see, and then you had the different offshoots of that, the different subsidiaries, as they say, right? And so it's a Nazi fascist cabal based on white supremacy, it's all, but it all means the same thing. Now, this arm of the, of the octopus, right? Is the Latino Hispanic arm, right? Now, what you're seeing, right, is a manifestation of this in, in, in the secret record. So they exposed the whole thing of systematic racism in America. You see, that's what they exposed. The CNN, what they're trying to do is CNN in places like that, is control the narrative and spin it into like, oh, somebody called you a monkey, into name-calling to cover up the systematic piece. Right? Which is the most egregious part. You see, they wanna hide, they say, well, if we focus on, these people are smart. You see? If we focus on somebody calling you a monkey, then the, the other parts that are worse and more horrible and more damaging and more violent, we can sweep under the rug until we ready to spring the trap on these niggas. That's, that's what they saying, right? That's their, that's their goal. So let's listen to you, I'm gonna show you what I mean.
...that position, the presidency, following the release of a secretly recorded conversation during which she used a vile racist slur to refer to the child of a fellow council member. This happened in a conversation about redistricting and the possible impact on communities of color. CNN's Nick Watt reports on the growing fallout from these remarks as calls intensify for her to step down from the council altogether.
Mike Bonin is an LA City Council member and father to a young black son. Last year, they went to an MLK Day parade. City Council President Nuri Martinez had some issues.
It's like black and brown on this floor. And then there's this, this white guy with this little black kid who's misbehaved. The kid is bouncing off the effing walls on the floor, practically tipping it over. There's nothing you can do to control him. Taese changuito.
Translation: little monkey.
They raised him like a little white kid, which I was like, this kid needs a beat down, like, let me, let me take, this kid needs a beat down, like, let me, let me take him around the corner and then I'll bring him back.
Bonin tweeted that Martinez attacked our son with horrific racist slurs and talked about her desire to physically harm him. It's vile, abhorrent, and utterly disgraceful. There were protests at her house. Today, she resigned.
So they're focusing on the fact that she called the little boy a monkey and said she wanted to beat him, abuse him physically. Right? I want physically abused somebody child and, uh, who was not a child, it's actually a subhuman. I wanna abuse this monkey nigger, right? And they're focusing on that. What she went on to say in the tapes, they didn't play, and it was much worse. Right? It was much worse, much more, even, I'm gonna say more, not just, it wasn't just a slurs and, you know, talking about violence against a child. It was much worse than that. It was the systematic white supremacy being subcontracted to the Hispanic Latino arm of the Nazi fascist white supremacists. And it shows how it works, that's the part CNN covered up. CNN is a racist white supremacist organization who fired Mark Lamont Hill for talking about apartheid in Israel. Right? Which nobody wanna touch that. Right? CNN is a white supremacist Nazi fascist propaganda unit. That's what they do, right? So they'll come out in, in a misinformation and a disinformation farm. That's what they are. Plain and simple. So they do damage control to keep white supremacy running on track, to keep the Nazis, the, the Nazi, this is, the Nazis never disappeared. This, this Nazi Hispanic Mexican is telling you the agenda of Nazis, the white supremacist fascist Nazis. Cause she learned from them. And I'm gonna show you that. The most dangerous part about them is not them calling you monkeys and niggers. Right? It's the cover-up of systematic white supremacy, right? And she even talks about that on the tape, but they cover that up. Why? Because CNN does the same thing. Alright, let's get to it.
That last voice, Councilmember Kevin DeLeon. He's got big ambitions. Ran for mayor this year and a US Senate seat in 18. "I regret appearing to condone and even contribute to certain insensitive comments," he wrote. "I fell short of the expectations we set for our leaders." "...and even contribute to certain insensitive comments," he wrote. "I fell short of the expectations we set for our leaders." Now, this audio tells us a couple of things. The first is the kind of language that some politicians are happy to use when they think nobody is listening. And also, it tells us about the deep divisions amongst the left-of-center leaders here in Los Angeles. Now, Nuri Martinez is the child of Mexican immigrants, but she says this about immigrants from the Mexican state of Oaxaca. She calls them- "Nuri Martinez is the child of Mexican immigrants, but she says this about immigrants from the Mexican state of Oaxaca. She calls them short, little, dark people." And, she says, of the Cuban-American District Attorney here in LA, she says, "F that guy. He's with the blacks." John?
So this guy, this is the spin. You see, he puts the spin on it right there. He tried to make it like, well, she not just racist against black people. Right? There's the spin. She's racist against, you know, different people, you know, even her own, she's a, you know, he tried to make it maybe about class and other Cubans. He brings in Mexicans from another part of Mexico. He, she starts talking about Cubans. He starts talking about, you know, you know what I mean? So he tries to spin and start getting off the subject. What they didn't talk about was the rest of the shit she said. See, let me tell you something, it's not what people say, it's what they don't say. It's not what people say that tells the story, it's what they don't say. And you had, and that's, that's when you, that's, that, that's when you understand that, is when you become a little more intelligent and a little more sophisticated. You see? When you don't get a message, motherfucker, that's the message. When the motherfucker don't call you back, well, you ain't got to call him to check, that's the message. You don't get a message, that's a message. It's not what they say, it's what they don't say. You see? What is CNN not saying? They're not talking about all of the other corruption that she was talking about, racist corrupt, white supremacist Nazi fascist racist corruption and the rest of the shit she was saying. They're trying to focus on her insulting, you know, somebody, a Cuban, saying that this Cuban, he supports black people. Right? He's with the blacks. Right? Like other so-called Hispanics, right, that she insulted to get off the subject. Oh, she just insults everybody. She's just an insulting person. If you get rid of her, everything will be fine. She's just kind of vulgar against people. See, this, this, this is the spin they trying to give you, right? She's just a vulgar person. It's nothing else to see here. It's a lot more to see here. You see, and I'm about to show you that.
...behind closed doors. These, this technology has become the ultimate accountability. We would never know that she had said that had somebody not recorded it and put it out to the world.
So there's-
That's possible now.
There's racism behind closed doors, then there's racism at a podium.
Yeah.
Right, in front of thousands of people. And that's what, and we call this the racism roundup today. And I, and I make a joke, but it's sad, it's sad. You know, Alabama Senator Tommy Tuberville, at a Trump event, was giving this speech where he just equated black people with criminals. Listen.
They want reparations because they think the people that do the crime are owed that. Bullshit. They are not owed that.
So again, this, he thought this statement helped him politically. He walked up on this stage presumably with the goal of saying that out loud in front of all these people. What does that tell you?
Well, it tells me that we've gone beyond dog whistles at this point. Like, we're actually calling the dog by its name, we're shouting it out very excitedly and vociferously with no shame whatsoever. And that's a huge problem right now going on within the Republican Party, especially those who have decided to hew so closely to Trump and to basically follow him completely off the edge of this cliff here.
Sorry, might be a little problem with the audio, but I fixed it. But, um, so as you can see in the last clip I played, they went on into, they, they veered and got, jumped off of her and started talking about Trump. Started talking about this white man who said black people that want reparations are just criminals. They're begging for reparations, basically, right? You know, degrading blacks. And then you, so you see, you have the upper echelon, right? So you have the, you know, white man, right? And then you have, right, who used to be a football coach, mind you, right? With a bunch of black people on his team, you see? And then he, he said it right out front. He just like, fuck it, right? Cause he don't have no respect for black people. Right? So he just said it out front. Right? They're a bunch of criminals who want, who begging for reparations. We don't owe a bunch of criminals nothing. Mind you, so the people that destroyed the Indians, committed genocide against blacks, Indians, whatever you wanna call it, implemented kidnapping, slavery operations, pirating, murder, torture, genocide, rape. They're not criminals. But the, the people who descend from the, the victims that they did this to, the prisoners of war, the slaves, the Indians, whatever, right, you wanna call it, well, they a bunch of criminals. Wow. That's interesting logic. See, this situation not gonna be solved with logic. Right? The Lord of hosts ain't gonna negotiate with these people. Thank God. Right? Thank God. You can't negotiate with nobody talking like that behind closed doors or in the open. Just FYI. You're never gonna get anywhere with these people. That's why God gonna deal with them the way he gonna deal with them. That's why, that's why the scripture makes sense to me, the prophecies of what's gonna happen to them. All of them make sense. It's just reality from a system engineering standpoint. It seems like it's not, but it is. Now, back to them. Even this black woman didn't comment on the horrible shit that these Hispanics was talking about. Right? They went on to start talking about Trump. Right? And Trump candidates to try to skip the subject. So I wanted to talk about that for a minute and describe that so that I could really go back to the meat of the matter, which is the systematic Nazism, racist, white supremacists. Even Vladimir Putin touched on it. Right? So let's go back to that. Right? Being perpetrated through other groups like Indians and Hispanics, but particularly Hispanics. Right? Let's talk about that. So what is the Nazi fascist white supremacist Latino Hispanic agenda in America? What is, why, why are they funneling them in there? Well, Nuri Martinez told you, right, and the rest of them. Right? Why are they so, why is this white man railing against reparations for black people? Why are these Hispanics railing against reparations and a black agenda? Right? Well, Nuri Martinez and company stated the goals of Hispanics and Latinos are the same goals as the white supremacists. Right? They in hand in hand. It's one, to take over all contracts. This is what they didn't talk about on CNN. Right? And they won't talk about, which was worse than her calling black people monkeys, just calling black people monkeys and subhuman. Nuri Martinez and company stated the goals of Hispanics slash Latinos in America are, number one, to take over all contracts and work at the airport barring blacks. Right? She spoke about that. Well, that's gonna permeate through every situation, trust me. I've dealt with them. On jobs and everything else, these immigrants, right, whether Hispanic or not, that's their attitude. Don't let them fool you, that's their attitude. She just said it openly. Right? Their, their jobs is to, their, their, their goal is to take over all contracts and work at the airport and barring all blacks. That's a given. Once they get people, once they get in, that's their agenda. To get their people in and get you out as soon as possible. Matter of fact, that happened to me today. I just lost a contract, right? To a Hispanic, a Hispanic woman who was running the contract I was working on, right? First of all, she had, she's talked shit to me, talked greasy to me, and I had to tell her, listen, bitch, don't talk to me like that. I ain't no fucking slave. I ain't no nigger or no monkey, don't talk to me like that. I don't need you that much. Alright, I ain't that kinda, I ain't that kinda monkey. Right? So what did she do? She cut one of my contracts. Right? Now, mind you, who was running the contract? A white man. Right? The white man ain't had no problem with me. She was making trouble. Right? She was making trouble and trying to get me out the contract, even though the white man was like, let the nigger work. What happened? Today, matter of fact, she pulled the contract. The white man called me and asked me, why didn't you show up on the work site? I said, well, you know, uh, the spicy senior reader over here pulled the contract. Right? Miss Mexico pulled the fucking contracts. Her and her, 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 her Mexican mafia pulled the contract. He said, I never told him to, I thought he did it. He said, I never told him to pull the contract. I'll get back to you. You see? So this is a fact, this is not, nobody's making, she told you the truth. Shit, bitch, you ain't had to tell me, I already know, I deal with these people every day. I ain't like these niggas walking around here in La La Land talking about a black-brown coalition. This shit happens to me every fucking day. I live in the real world. I don't know where these niggas live. Maybe they live in Disneyland somewhere. Right? And so she told the truth. She said, the, the goal is to take over all contracts and work and bar blacks from the airport. She was talking about the Los Angeles airport. CNN wouldn't talk about that. You see? There's a reason why CNN didn't wanna talk about that. She, and the black people on CNN wouldn't bring it up. Sunny Harston from The View, Whoopi Goldberg, none of them is gonna bring up everything this woman said. Because they all work for white supremacists and it's systematic. Like the white man said, these niggas are criminals. We'll never pay them reparations to a bunch of nigger, subhuman criminals. Right? You always the criminal. But the real criminals are never, they are, they're never the criminals, they're doing the work of white Jesus. Right? That's why God gonna get with them. You see, very soon. All of y'all. He gonna get with y'all very soon. And y'all gonna get your karma. You not gonna be nowhere calling them the descendants of slavery criminals, while the real criminals is the one calling you a criminal. His parents is the criminals. You see? You gonna have to pay for that. Right? Number two, let's get to number two. Right? Let's, let's, let's just run through some of those. Right? So number one, she said, with the her and her little, her cabal state, right? Her white supremacist Mexican Nazi cabal state. They said that the goals of Hispanics and Latinos is number one, take over all contracts and work at the airport barring blacks. Number two, Nuri Martinez and company stated the goals of Hispanics and Latinos are, if blacks don't comply with what Hispanics and Latinos say, we will chop them up in a blender. Well, that's what they did to Philando Castile. He chopped him up in a blender when he shot him in his car, that Mexican cop. You see? So they meant that literally and figuratively. And it don't matter if you comply, they still gonna try to chop you up in a blender. Like the lady did with me. You see? It don't matter if you comply or not. They got something for you. They got all the smoke for you. They doing something, I heard some guys from, um, LA talking about today. They, they, the gangs out there is doing some shit called like, um, they, they putting, they spraying NK. Nigger killer everywhere. You see? You better get yourself, my brother talking about give up your weapons, you better get yourself some weapons. I don't give a fuck if it's a bow and arrow. You know what I mean? They spraying, the gangs is spraying NK everywhere out of LA now. While the Mexican politicians is doing this. The writing is on the wall, they gonna, they, when the white man pull the switch, they gonna purge you niggas. That's why they writing nigger killer everywhere on the walls. Right? But I say, fuck that, I ain't going out without a fight. Right? Said blacks don't wanna cooperate, we'll chop them up in a blender. They don't talk about that, she said on CNN, that they said that. Why? Why isn't CNN and the black people on CNN and Sunny Harston talking about that? Oh, they just call you a monkey. They did a lot more, she said a lot more than that. Number three, what was they saying? Let's just break it down. Right? What was she, what was they saying in that secret tape? Right? She, she did, she called you a fucking black monkey. Right? Nigger, black monkey, subhuman. Right? They wanna promote that kinda thing. Right? And, and, and another thing they talked about was, they said, this is the most, one of the most important, see, this is the key to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this and I'm gonna end this. This is the key to why CNN, the black people on The View and the rest of them didn't wanna talk about the rest of what she said. This was the key thing in what she said. She said, and they were saying, not just her, we must do this in secret. If the blacks find out our true goals, they will fight us. You see? That's what the Hispanic man did to me when he kidnapped my son. He kidnapped my son in secret. Him and, him and that bitch. Right? They waited till I didn't suspect anything. And then they, they took my son and they packed up the whole house and they moved everything and they moved and ran away. And when I came back, they was gone. Right? That's how these people operate. Right? And she right, every time I've dealt with them, that's how they operate. That's how the white supremacists operate. Right? Tell them it's a black-brown coalition. Act like you their friend. Right? And when they not looking, stick a sword in their back. Run their ass through with a sword. And that's what they gonna do. In the end, Jacob's trouble. You see? Jacob is in trouble. Who is Jacob? Jacob is the man that was, uh, changed his name, he was, the name was changed to Israel. See? The children of Jacob is in trouble. The children of Jacob are not white people. Alright? The sons of Jacob are not white people. You see? Jacob's trouble, right? He said, we must do this in secret. If the blacks find out our true goals, they may try to fight us. You see? So be careful when these people, when you dealing with these people at work, on the job, on the street. That's like I said, if you get home, you know, you get your concealed carry, you gonna own them, you know, whatever, I don't give a fuck what you gotta get, but you better get something. Cause she just didn't mean that figuratively, they gonna fight us. Particularly when the gangs is spraying nigger killers, the, the Mexican gangs spraying nigger killers all over the walls and shooting black people on the street. Right? This is an extension of what's happening in the streets. What's happening in the Los Angeles City Hall is just an extension of what's happening on the streets. That's what happened to me. You see, with, with some Hispanics, I thought it was a black-brown coalition, they ran off one of my children and turned them against me. Right? Right? Then told my son I abandoned him. Right? And turned my son into a fucking, you know, prob, a half a nut job. You see? This is what America does with this racism, this white supremacy, this Nazi fascism. Being around these people, integration, I said it before, diversity and integration is a failure. Martin Luther King said it. This shit is a fucking horror show. Right? This shit is a freak show and a horror show. Right? And if you were smart, you wouldn't want it, none, you wouldn't really want it, black people were smart and they had any force- was smart and they had any foresight, they wouldn't have never wanted no parts of this shit. Never. That's why they don't want to get you reparations, because they don't want you to get away from them. Because they want to destroy you. See, if you, if you like me, I'll pay a motherfucker to leave me alone. Motherfucker get on my nerves while we arguing about something and then, "Oh, you owe me 20, 21 dollars, blah, blah, blah." I might even give it to you. Here you go. Take the money and just get out my face. You know what I mean? These motherfuckers don't wanna pay you. Why? Because they want, they want you close enough to them to destroy them, to destroy you. That's why they don't wanna give you reparations. Because they want to destroy you, right? She even said that in the, in the video, in the recording. She said the same fucking thing. That's why they don't wanna play the rest of it and they don't really wanna talk about what she was saying in the recording, with her and them dudes, the Mexicans were saying. She said, "Yeah, play nice." She talked about, you know, keeping them around. Some dude should be saying something about keeping them around. He's a diva, blah, blah, blah. Go listen to the tape. You ain't gotta take it from me. Listen to their own words. Listen to it. Play it again, rewind it. Listen to it, play it again if you're not sure. Where she said, "See, you gotta study this shit. It's not a joke." Because it'll cost you children, your life. It'll cost you a lot if you think it's a joke, you think it won't. It may cost you your life soon, like Philando Castile. You'll be laying on the side of the road in front of your, your wife and your daughter with your motherfucking arm, you know, blown off, with some Mexican screaming at you and spitting on you and shit. The Mexican cop. Because you think it's a joke, right? You think it's a joke. You think it's funny. Yeah, man? Enough shit happen to you, you won't think it's funny no more. See, that's why I, I know what I learned. See, I learned the hard way. It took me to be, you know, to get older and realize what I was losing, what I had lost at the hands of people in life, you see, to start really looking at shit differently. You know, you look at yourself, but then you look at the world as well. You change yourself and then you look at the world outside as well. And you realize it's not a game, that motherfuckers ain't playing with you. Motherfuckers don't like you. You see? They do not like you and they're willing, you know, seek, whether openly or in secret, to do things to hurt you. And that's just how it is. That's just the world, you know? That's just the way the world is. You know what I mean? And like she said, "We have to do this in secret because if not, they'll try to fight us." We gotta tell them it's a black-brown coalition, right? We gotta tell them, "No, no, everything gonna be good, like the man told me. Yeah, yeah, everything cool. Get outta here, nigger." "No, I'm sorry." See, that's why I don't let people tell me I'm sorry no more. I don't want your apology. You can't, I'm never, I would never let somebody do some of the shit these people done in my life. I don't let people apologize to me. Get the fuck out my face and don't ever come back, if you know what's good for you. You see? That's kind of how I operate. Because I already know, I've been through, I've been through, I've watched people, you know, that claim to be cool come back and murder people. I grew up on the streets, so when I, when I say this shit, I'm not making it up. You got, and if a motherfucker knew me, they could ask anybody I know, whether you in my family, they could listen to this shit. And they'd be like, "Yeah, he telling the truth." I've watched people in my family get killed by the, by people who they thought was cool with them on more than one occasion. Or more than one occasion, you see? So they just a Mexican or Hispanic, you know, kidnapping one of my kids, you know, or doing something. I've, I've watched, you know, acting like they was cool and then doing some shit like that. I've watched more than one person act like they was cool come around you and then, you know, kill you. I grew up around people like that. So I don't let people apologize to me. You see? Like now, this Hispanic woman is apologizing. She just said, "We gotta do this in secret. If they find out, they'll try to fight us." So then you turn around and accept her apology? Nigga, she just told you what she was gonna do. Her apology shouldn't be worth shit to you. That don't even make sense. That's like a motherfucker telling you, "I'm gonna kill you." Right? And everybody with you, and it's four motherfuckers with you, and they kill four of them and then they come back and say, "Hey, sorry about them four people I killed." And they threatened you too, but you say, "Okay, man, you right." And you shake their hand and then you turn your back and then they kill you. That motherfucker, you believe them? You watch what they did? And they even threatened you? And you still shook their hand and accepted their apology? You should have brandished the sword and told them, "Get the fuck away from me, while you still can, motherfucker, or it's your head." Not no talking about, "I accept your apology." And then get stabbed, turn around and get stabbed in the back. Never accept a motherfucker apology that already done told you what they gonna do to you. Not only that, they showed you what they would do to you if you not fucking looking. The bitch said it. We, go listen to the tape. "We must do this in secret. If the blacks find out our true goals, they are going to fight us." How much more plain, I'm, I'm gonna end this, man, but how much more fucking plain do somebody gotta make it to you? She said it. She said, "This is a hostile takeover." Right? Said, "Our intentions toward these blacks are hostile." Bitch, you ain't gotta tell me. I already knew that. I deal with y'all every day. Y'all hostility. I had a, I had a Mexican man with a gun talk shit to me in Walmart yesterday. Him and then the lady behind the counter, Mexican lady, got smart, talked shit to me. Which she was wrong. Both of them was wrong about the shit they were saying, but they was talking shit like they wanted to get at me. Wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't say sorry about the, I mean, the dude tried to say I was sorry, but I would never say, I was like, "Don't worry about it," and walked off. Do I accept his apology? No. I'm not gonna let no motherfucker that screamed on me with a gun for no fucking reason and I'm gonna turn around and be like, "Yeah, we cool," when I already know what the shit y'all be doing. Nah, motherfucker. You better sleep with one eye open, fucking with me, because I don't accept no apologies. That shit over with. Go tell that shit to them niggas down the road. Tell them you're, you know, go tell them you apologize and cut their throat. They're a bunch of, they're a bunch of chumps anyway. Not me. I won't do it. I don't accept your apology, right? And I'm gonna back away from you, you know what I mean? With my hand on my sword, you know what I mean? And one eye on you and I'm on swivel for any, any of you other motherfuckers. Nah, I don't accept no apology. Get out my face. And that should be people's attitude. This bitch come out talking about she, that she wanna apologize. You can't, you know, you can't hug and walk off on everything. You can't hug it out on everything. Particularly with a bunch of snakes. That's why black people losing in Ameri, I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna go for real. But this is why black people lose in America, they at the bottom. They're trying to negotiate and hug it out with a bunch of fucking snakes. It is never, and it's gonna never work. Like she said, "We must do this in secret. If the blacks find out our true goals, they gonna fight us." Integration, diversity, black-brown coalitions, all that rainbow this, that's the whole, what she said. "We must do this in secret." That's the whole, "We let's do it in secret" shit. That's why they gave you, they said, they gave you the civil rights bill and start talking about integration and diversity. Because they said, "Well, we rather do it in secret. Better to, you know, get these niggas in secret than to do it openly, because if we do it openly, they gonna fight us." That's the same thing the white man said. So their program is just white supremacy. You see? It's all the same thing. It's just subcontracting to a different branch of white supremacists, Nazi fascists. That's all. And their goal is to do it in secret, to set a trap for you, right? That you can't get out of, just like in Nazi Germany, right? Set a trap for these motherfuckers that they can't get out of, right? Then we'll just finish them off. You see? I mean, it's all the same, it's the same playbook, right? But I mean, she gave you the playbook, right? Like, she gave you the playbook. My question is, who, who would accept their apology after this? Like, how could you move forward? I don't give a fuck if, whatever, I'm gonna say this and I'm gonna go for real, but somebody coming out and just basically putting their agenda out there for you, how is it that you not moving differently when you dealing with them? Is the question. You see what I'm saying? How is it that you not moving differently? How is it that you don't suspect that they may be about to hurt you? Even though they done told you that and showed you that, right? I realize, dude, trust me, don't, it will cost you your life or it will cost you something that you can't give back. It will cost you your life or the life of your friends and family, or something that you can never get back again, if you don't fucking get it. In life, you know, certain things in life, that's just how it goes. There are no do-overs. You know what I mean? When somebody turn your fucking TV off, right? There are no do-over, you don't, they ain't no do-overs. When you done, you done. That's just how it is. Right? And so, you know, when these people, they done told you what their plan is, they done laid it out in front of you. Their plan is the same as the rest of them, right? It's just a white supremacist template. Take people at their word. When they say, "Listen, this is what we gonna do to you," right? I tell, take them at their word. Like, "Bitch, I believe you. I believe you 100%." When I see what happened to Philando Castile, when I see what happened to my son, when I see what happened every day with contracts and business that I do, right? I believe you. You ain't gotta convince me and I don't want your apology. But you know what? On that, that's all I got.